Good evening, everybody. I know seating is limited, but if you could find your way to the nearest seat, that would be great. Excellent. Thank you, everybody. Begins tonight's meeting, I'd like to ask you all to stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, children of all ages, welcome to the Fall Town Meeting. I am Town Moderator Jack Conway. Next to me is Town Clerk Lucia Longhurst, who has the unenviable task of keeping, job of keeping me on task tonight. Good luck. Also joining me on the stage are Paula Daniels and Bonnie Yezekovich, the Chair and fill-in Vice Chair from the Finance Committee. We are also lucky enough to have Representative Jay Barrows visiting us tonight, so thank you very much for coming, Jay. And we also have Norton's own honorary Mayor Peter Wiggins. All right, with those introductions and pleasantries out of the way, I'd like to sincerely thank you guys for being here tonight to participate in our town's legislative process. You folks in this room will be making decisions that will guide Norton forward. On behalf of your elected representatives and resident volunteers, thank you for coming out and thank you for caring. Before we get into the nitty-gritty of tonight's business, I need to review some of the ground rules for tonight. I ask everyone to please find a seat for this meeting, which does not seem to be a challenge tonight, so we'll tick that one off. Standing in the back or on the sides creates problems both on a noise level and in counting standing votes. Again, I don't think we're going to have that problem.
No.
All right. If you are not a registered voter in the town of Norton, you are welcome to attend, but must sit in the section of seats where I indicate, which is where Stephen Peterson from Sun Chronicle is currently sitting. If you are a registered voter, please sit literally anywhere else, because your vote will not be counted if you're sitting with Stephen. If you wish to address this meeting, you must do so only after being recognized by the moderator. There are two microphones located in the back aisle for this purpose. The microphone down front here will be used by town employees and presenters. Please move to one of those if you wish to speak and wait to be recognized. When speaking, please identify yourself by name and address for the record. Please try and keep your statements concise, direct, and limited only to the matter under consideration at this time. All speakers at this meeting will be treated with courtesy by the moderator and everyone else in the room. No speaker will be allowed to use the meeting for personal attacks on any individual. All remarks will be directed towards the moderator, and while I will allow questions to be asked of individuals, I will not allow cross-examination-type discussions from the floor. In recognizing people to speak, I will endeavor to call upon those who have not yet spoken on a topic before recognizing those who have already spoken. I will recognize motions to move the question, but if, in my opinion, there are still people waiting to speak who may add to the discussion, I will exercise my authority to not accept such a motion to move the question under those circumstances. If a standing vote is required, I think we skipped that one. You will be instructed to stand at your seats until your vote is counted. If a ballot vote is required, you'll be given instructions by the moderator and town clerk as to how to proceed. If you wish to make an amendment to any motion, you must do so in writing and present it to the moderator. Please prepare your amendment in writing and bring it up to me here. If you are moving an article that has not been recommended and moved by the Finance Committee, you must also present that motion to the town clerk in writing, and it must be done in a proper form. I remind you all that no motion to reconsider any article will be accepted by the moderator until at least three articles following the article being reconsidered have been acted upon by this meeting. If the article is one of the last three on the warrant, I will accept any motions to reconsider them at any time prior to adjourning. Please be aware that any article you act upon tonight can be reconsidered as few as three articles later, so keep that in mind before you rush out after your article. There may be requests this evening to allow non-voters to speak on certain articles. This must be done by a motion voted upon by this meeting. While it is the right and the decision of the meeting to allow or not allow non-residents to speak, please keep in mind that they may have information to add to the discussion. All non-voters must approach the moderator if they wish to be heard. Now, Madam Clerk, do we have a return of this warrant?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. I have served this warrant by posting attested copies at Chartley Post Office, Norton Post Office, Norton Municipal Center, Norton Public Library, and three other public places within the limits of said town, seven days at least before the time of holding said meeting. Attest: Michael Mayer, Constable of Norton, date 10/12/2023.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's get rolling. Article one. Article one. Article one is declared lost for lack of a motion. Article two.
Mr. Moderator.
Madam Chair.
I move that the town vote to transfer the amount of $117,544 from free cash to pay all outstanding separation expenses associated with the retirement of various employees from the town of Norton and to authorize the town accountant in consultation with the town manager to allocate amounts to appropriate departments.
At this point, I'd like to ask the town manager just to speak very quickly to this article.
This article covers retirements in the Highway Department and Police Department, so sickly buyback and vacation time.
Thank you. Any questions on this article before we move to vote? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article two, please raise your hand. All opposed? Article two passes by majority vote. Article three.
Mr. Moderator.
Madam Chair.
I move that the town vote to transfer the total amount of $94,574 from free cash to fund and implement the first year of the three-year collective bargaining agreements between the town and the following unions for the period beginning July 1, 2023 through June 30, 2026, and to authorize the town accountant to allocate amounts to appropriate departments. From free cash, the sum of $80,156 for Norton Police Superior Officers Association, and from free cash, the sum of $14,418 for United Steel, Paper and Forestry, Rubber Manufacturing, Energy, Allied Industrial and Service Workers International Union, AFL-CIO-CLC, Local Union 9517, Unit 15, formerly known as SENA-A.
Thank you. Once again, I'd like to ask the town manager just to give a little information on this.
These are both three-year contracts. The long name that you said, but I'll say SENA-A, lot shorter. That's all the department heads, and then the $80,000 is for the Norton Police Superiors Association, and it covers $46,956 in salary increases and $33,000 in education incentive for money.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Town Manager. Any questions on Article three? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article three? All opposed? Article three passes by majority vote. Article four.
Mr. Moderator.
Madam Chair.
I move that the town vote to amend the vote taken under Article seven of the May 15, 2023 Annual Town Meeting Warrant by increasing appropriations for certain line items and as funding therefore to raise and appropriate the amount of $499,524 to transfer the amount of $8,205 from the dog fund and to transfer the amount of $513,628 from free cash, all as specified in the Finance Committee recommendations for Article four of the October 23, 2023 Annual Town Meeting Warrant.
Excellent. And if we could just scroll down a little bit and pull up that table? Thank you very much. So Article four deals with this information here. Give everybody a few minutes to review and digest before asking any questions and going to vote. Sure. The moderator recognizes town manager to explain one item on there.
I just want to explain that the $424,518 in long-term interest, that's part of the debt exclusion for the three projects, the Council on Aging, the Town Hall, and the Ball Fails.
Thank you, Mr. Town Manager. Any questions on Article four as presented? Seeing none, all in favor of Article four as presented, please raise your hand. All opposed? Article four passes by majority vote. Article five.
Mr. Moderator.
Madam Chair.
I move that the town vote to amend the fiscal year 2024 Water Enterprise Operating Budget as approved at the May 15, 2023 Annual Town Meeting by increasing appropriations for certain line items and by transferring from Water Enterprise receipts, including but not limited to user charges, lease revenue, interest, permits, anticipated receipts, and miscellaneous revenues, and additional $66,092, all as specified in the Finance Committee recommendations for Article five of the October 23, 2023 Annual Town Meeting Warrant.
We have that information on the screen here as well. Mr. Town Manager, anything you'd like to say to this one?
Just the largest number there, debt services. This is because we had done temporary borrowing, and after three years, they require us to make a payment on that note, so that's what that is.
Excellent. Any questions on Article five? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article five as presented, please raise your hand. All opposed? Article five passes by majority vote. Article six.
Mr. Moderator.
Madam Chair.
I move that the town vote to amend the fiscal year 2024 Sewer Enterprise Operating Budget as approved at the May 15, 2023 Annual Town Meeting by increasing appropriations for certain line items and by transferring from Sewer Enterprise retained earnings, and additional $16,484, all as specified in the Finance Committee recommendations for Article six of the October 23, 2023 Annual Town Meeting Warrant.
Thank you. And again, the information is up on the screen. Any questions on Article six? I swear there is no penalty for asking questions. We're making great time already, so feel free. All right, seeing no questions for Article six, all those in favor of Article six as presented, please raise your hand. All opposed? Article six passes by majority vote. Article seven.
Mr. Moderator.
Madam Chair.
I move that the town vote to transfer the amount of $1 million from free cash to the Capital Improvements Fund.
Any questions on Article seven? Yes, sir.
62 Powell Street. I just have a question. How much free cash do we have?
Excellent question. Mr. Town Manager or Mr. Town Accountant?
Free cash was certified at $4,928,970.
Great. Thank you. Any additional questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article seven as presented, please raise your hand. All opposed? Article seven passes by majority vote. Article eight.
Mr. Moderator.
Madam Chair.
I move that the town vote to transfer the amount of $806,981 from the Capital Improvements Account, $100,000 from Sewer Retained Earnings, and $499,500 from the Ambulance Reserve Fund for a total of $1,406,481 to purchase or lease with an option to purchase for periods of time up to or in excess of three years, new and/or replacement capital items for various town departments, including equipping any vehicles and all other incidental and related expenses, all as specified in the Finance Committee recommendations for Article eight of the October 23, 2023 Annual Town Meeting Warrant.
We'll get that pulled up on the screen for you. Excellent, thank you. Let's go bucket by bucket if anyone has any questions. We have somebody moving to the microphone. This is very exciting. Yes?
Laurel Curran, 183 Godfrey Drive. I have a question about the vehicles for the Board of Health Inspection and Conservation. $182,000 seems like a lot of money for vehicles that I would think would be used within the town, and I don't know what extra things would be added to a vehicle to make them worth that much money.
Great, excellent question. Mr. Town Manager.
The three vehicles are three electric pickup trucks, so that will help us also with our Green Communities funding as part of our plan, and vehicles have become very expensive, unfortunately.
Let's go category by category. Police Department 210, any questions? Fire Department 220? Norton Public Schools 300? Highway 420? Board of Health Inspection and Conservation? Recreation and Norton Public Schools? And Sewer? Seeing no further questions, all those in favor of Article eight as presented, please raise your hand. All opposed? Article eight passes by 2,000 majority vote. Article nine.
Mr. Moderator.
Madam Chair.
I move that the town vote to transfer the amount of $2,000 from free cash to purchase and accessorize an automated external defibrillator.
Thank you. Any questions on Article nine? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article nine, please raise your hand. All opposed? Article nine passes by majority vote. Article ten.
Mr. Moderator.
Madam Chair.
I move that the town vote to transfer the amount of $201,801 from free cash to be expended only for any lawful purposes and consistent with the applicable opioid settlement agreement, including but not limited to those purposes outlined in the Massachusetts State Subdivision Agreement for statewide opioid settlements, and more specifically in Section 3 of the attached thereto entitled Massachusetts Abatement Terms to Support Opioid Education, Prevention, Treatment, Recovery, and Harm Prevention.
Thank you. I would like to once again invite the town manager to speak to this article.
So we received $201,801 as part of the settlement with the drug manufacturers for opioid, and unfortunately, the state, we can all, as was stated, those are the only items we can spend this money on, but there's no provision in Mass General laws to hold that money aside unless we have an article to appropriate it for that. So that is the purpose of this article.
Thank you, Mr. Town Manager. Any questions on Article 10? Very well, all those in favor of Article 10 as presented, please raise your hand. All opposed? Article 10 passes by majority vote. Article 11.
Mr. Moderator.
Madam Chair.
I move that the town vote to transfer the amount of $35,000 from free cash to be expended only for any lawful purposes and consistent with the cannabis host community agreements for the implementation of mitigation measures associated with the sale of recreational marijuana.
Thank you. Mr. Town Manager, you know where I'm going with this again?
This is similar to the previous article. This is money we received from one of the facilities in town, and it can only be used for expenses, costs that the town has that are impacts from that facility. And there is some question with legislation that's being looked at right now whether we may have to give that money back, so we have to now hold this money aside. We can only use it for any impacts that we actually have, and if the legislation changes, we may have to even give that money back. So we thought it'd be wise to hold it aside, so if we do have to have some expenses we have to address or if we do have to give the money back, it's there.
Thank you, Mike. He faked me out. All right, any questions on Article 11? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 11 as presented, please raise your hand. All opposed? Article 11 passes by majority vote. Article 12.
Mr. Moderator.
Madam Chair.
I move that the town vote to transfer the amount of $10,000 from free cash for the costs associated with complying with the federally mandated actuarial reporting requirements of post-employment benefits.
Mr. Town Manager? I know you're getting sick of walking up there, but...
Other post-employment benefits are retiree health insurance, and we're required to do this study every two years, and so this is the money that's needed to pay the actuarial that will actually do the study for us to see what our liability is.
Thank you. Any questions on Article 12? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 12 as presented, please raise your hand. And opposed? Article 12 passes by majority vote. Article 13.
Mr. Moderator.
Madam Chair.
I move that the town vote to accept the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 54b1, as most recently amended by Section 26 of Chapter 28 of the Acts of 2023, to allow town trust funds to be invested using the so-called prudent investor rule found in General Law, Chapter 203c.
Thank you. Mr. Town Manager? Do you want to just pull a chair over there, Mike? And leave yourself comfortable?
So back in May, Town Meeting voted to file special legislation to allow us to use the prudent investor form of investing, and while that was moving through the legislature, the governor signed, when the governor signed the budget this year, this provision was in the budget, so the special legislation was held up, because now it takes a simple vote of Town Meeting to allow us to use prudent investor. And if you don't remember from the discussion we had back in May, if you don't have the prudent investor policy, the state has a legal list, and there's 22 companies on the list in seven different sectors, so it limits where we can invest money. And this is only for trust funds, not the regular money for the budgets, so it, and there are guidelines that the treasurer has to follow, and she also has an advisor to work with her on those investments.
Thank you, Mike. Any questions, Article 13? Mr. Sabas.
Dinesh Sabas, 55 Drive, two questions. The first one is, how much money do we have in trusts? And the second one is, why do we particularly want to go to the prudent investor? I understand it, but at the same time, prudent investor rule says you can invest in more risky stuff. It's not particularly a safe way to run our trusts.
Mr. Town Manager.
I can't tell you exactly how much money we have in trust funds. The town has several trust funds, and as far as any risky investments, the treasurer will not be making any risky investments, so the benefit of being able to invest in other companies is on the list right now the state has. I mean, Hewlett Pack and McDonald's, Bank of America, General Electric, Johnson &amp; Johnson, the list is limited, and you know, if they're, depending on how those companies are doing at any one time, you're not going to make much money on your investments.
Mr. Sabas.
Sorry, I know we all want to get out of here relatively quickly, but, and I will certainly allow that I may misunderstand the prudent investor rule. However, it would also allow for us to invest in cryptocurrency, which, you know, Bitcoin, James, I see you're shaking your head, but it would, right? Because it just says that you have to do what a prudent investor would do. It doesn't say you can't take risk. It says you just have to be a prudent investor, what an average prudent investor would do. It doesn't say you can't invest in riskier things.
So hold on, James.
Again, I allow that I may misunderstand it, but I don't think I do.
Well, I can tell you that we will not be investing in cryptocurrency. That's out of the question. I am not the town treasurer. She's not here with us tonight. That's all I can tell you about it right now, is the fact that I know we're not going to be investing in cryptocurrencies. I don't even think it is allowed.
Mr. Sabas.
I'm not sure how we can guarantee that we won't be investing in, I use cryptocurrency as an example, but other, and when I say the word risk, you understand, like if, when you're talking about investments, risk is not necessarily a bad thing. There are risk tolerances, right? Somebody who's 23 years old might invest in something much more risky. Someone who's 80 years old wants considerably less risk. I'm just stating that I'm not sure that for trust funds, which I think we draw upon some of these, I want to say the Higgs Fund, there are certain ones, and I get, like, you know, there's limits to what we can draw on, but we use these things for certain things in our towns. I just want to make sure that we're really clear on what we're doing here, and we're, we all understand that this potentially can expose us or expose those trust funds to risk that we, as members sitting in this audience, may not understand right now. And while I love that you and I could both say, "We won't be doing this," prudent investor rule doesn't prohibit us from doing that. It's simply we're just saying, "Hey, we won't do it." But five years from now, 10 years from now, I mean, who knows?
Thank you. Michael.
Hi, Michael Tool, 53 Lincoln Street. We served on the, with the, on the Hicks Board before, and this was a very well-debated subject. The problem, the reason why we decided, or the reason why the Select Board at the time decided to kind of propose this going forward, it was very limited on the number of accounts that we could invest in, investments we could do. Many were tobacco, alcohol, things that we just didn't necessarily feel comfortable with. I was told by Bartholomew, who was invested, that cryptocurrency is not an option, that it's not even, legally, it's not an option for the state, so that, because that was one of my first concerns, right? Obviously, we've seen the fluctuation of crypto. This allows us and allows, and if I'm not mistaken, and Mike would probably have to say this, but the treasurer knows this, this is not only the trust, I believe it's OPEB as well. I could be wrong, but it's OPEB as well, and this allows us to, a wider portfolio to invest our money in. Risk is risk, but this, I think, when we're stuck with just the 20 or so investments, you're better off spreading out the risk, and that's why I think this is the right thing. thing to do for the town.
Thank you. Mr. Town Manager?
OPEB is in, is one of the trust funds, as is the Hicks Fund, and, you know, we hire professionals, and we hire a professional treasurer-collector, and who also hires a professional financial advisor, and also we have audits every year, we have a financial team at the Town Hall. We are not going to be investing in risky things, and I remind you that the town voted to go with prudent investor in May. We're simply saying, "We can stop the special legislation and make this happen just by a vote here."
Thank you, Mike. Any additional questions on Article XIII? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article XIII as presented, please raise your hand. All opposed? Article XIII passes by majority vote. Article XIV.
Mr. Moderator.
Madam Chair.
I move that the town vote to accept the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 140, Section 139c, to exempt from licensing fees service animals and dogs owned by a person aged 70 or over.
Mr. Griffin?
Tim Griffin, 169 John Scott Boulevard. Just a clarification, I think your wording may have made it, made more sense, but just to clarify, we're saying service animals and dogs owned by a person over 70, or service animals and dogs owned by a person over 70, just to clarify what we're doing.
Yes. Madam Congress? Sure.
I'm looking to waive the fee for anyone 70 years or older, one dog per household, and also I will add that it is the law that service dogs do not pay for licensing.
Excellent, thank you. Any additional questions? Do we need a grammar check on that?
Put a what after animals?
A comma. Does anybody want to mark that up as an amendment? All right, all right. Town Council is advising us that we are good to go. All right. All those in favor of Article XIV, please raise your hand. Opposed? Article XIV passes by majority vote. Article XV.
Mr. Moderator.
Madam Chair.
I move that the town vote to transfer the amount of $16,720 from free cash to remove, expand, and replace the rear parking lot area, including all incidental and related expenses at the Norton Historical Society site identified as 18 West Main Street Norton and shown on Assessor's Map 23 as parcel 39, or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Town Manager, would you mind speaking to this one as well?
So this is, if you, where the Norton Historical Society is, this is the driveway on the right side of the property, and we did get three estimates, and this is the one that's recommended for the work.
Any questions? Seeing none, all in favor of Article XV as presented, please raise your hand. All opposed? Article XV passes by majority vote. Article XVI.
Mr. Moderator.
Madam Chair.
I move that the town vote to transfer the amount of $27,000 from free cash for the installation of municipal sewerage, including all incidental and related expenses at the Norton Historical Society site identified as 18 West Main Street Norton and shown on Assessor's Map 23 as parcel 39.
Mike, would you like to?
This is the same property, and we did get three estimates for the work to connect the building to sewer. As you know, there was a lot of ledge out in that area, so this would involve a pump system and going into, so we don't have to go down so deep, going out to the sewer on West Main Street.
Thank you, Mike. Any questions on Article XVI? Seeing none, all in favor of Article XVI, please raise your hand. Opposed? Article XVI passes by majority vote. Article XV.
Mr. Moderator.
Madam Chair.
I move that the town vote to approve Article XV as printed in the October 23, 2023 Annual Town Meeting Warrant to transfer the amount of $1,400 from free cash for this purpose, and to authorize the town accountant in consultation with the town manager to allocate amounts to appropriate departments.
Thank you. Open that up for any questions out there. Everybody just wants to get home real fast, I guess, huh? All right, all in favor of Article XV as presented, please raise your hand. And opposed? Article XV passes majority vote. Article XVIII.
Mr. Moderator.
Madam Chair.
I move that the town vote to transfer the amount of $120,000 from free cash to the other post-employment benefits liability trust fund, established to cover the unfunded actuarial liability for retirees' health care and life insurance benefits.
We'll open the floor to questions on Article XVIII. All right, all those in favor of, all those in favor of Article XVIII. Opposed? Article XVIII passes by majority vote. Article XIX.
Mr. Moderator.
Madam Chair.
I move that the town vote to transfer the amount of $1 million from free cash to the stabilization fund in accordance with General Law, Chapter 40, Section 5b.
Mr. Town Manager, would you mind educating us all on the stabilization fund?
So this would transfer $1 million into our stabilization fund. The goal is to have a stabilization fund that is 5% of our budget, so with this, our stabilization fund will be at $3,131,779.87, and it should be at $3,596,000, so we'll have to keep working at it. And as part of this $1 million, there was a commitment made in May by the Finance Committee to provide $707,500 to the school department in May, with the provision that we were going to put that much money at least back into stabilization.
Thank you, Mike. Questions for Article XIX? Running out of real estate. If anybody wants to speak into a microphone, it's really fun. Michael.
It's for the Town Manager, Michael Tool, 53 Lincoln Street. Mr. Town Manager, we know that there's $4 million after today, if it's given a vote, goes over $2 million. What was the thought process of not putting more in to the stabilization?
Mr. Town Manager?
So the thought process is, every year, we hold money for snow and ice. We've had years where we've spent between $300,000 and $400,000 on snow and ice, so we're holding money for that. Also, at a very base level, we've been putting $700,000 a year from free cash into the budgets for the next year. So right now, we're holding on to $1.7 million of free cash, and, you know, depending on how we get through the winter and what else comes up, we can look at adding more money to stabilization in May.
Mike, you're probably going to want to stay up for the next article anyway. Any other questions? Article XIX. Seeing none, all in favor of Article XIX as presented. Opposed? Article XIX passes by majority vote. Article XX.
Mr. Moderator.
Madam Chair.
I move that the town vote to revoke the acceptance of civil service laws for the Town of Norton Fire Department at all ranks effective January 1, 2024, thereby removing the fire department force from the provisions of the civil service laws and the rules and regulations relating to the same, provided that this revocation will not affect the civil service status of existing personnel in their current positions.
Mr. Town Manager, one last time, please.
This was part of our last negotiations with the firefighters' union, and they've agreed to this. Civil service, basically, has become a broken system. It takes forever, you'll, people will take a test through civil service, we're waiting at least six months to get the results of those tests. We don't have enough people sign up for lists to even take the tests, and it just, they're just, it's just a system that's become broken. So this will make it easier for us, we've been having trouble hiring in the fire department. This will make it easier for us to hire, and it will definitely streamline all our promotions as we move forward.
Thank you, Mike. Any questions on Article XX? We have one.
Hi, Christine DeVoe, 14 Holly Road. I just have a question, are we going to be using like a private third party, like, kind of like how the police system does, like Getbadge.com or whatever it's called? Is the firefighter department going to be using something similar to that?
We will be using companies to do the tests for us, yes.
Just a follow-up, is that going to be, do you have to pay like a fee to use them?
We will, yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any additional questions on Article XX? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article XX as presented, please raise your hand. Opposed? Article XX passes by majority vote. Article 21. Article 21. Article 21 is declared lost by lack of emotion, and for those keeping support...
Mr. Moderator.
Yes.
You forgot Article 43. Tomorrow, your birthday?
Oh.
It's Jack's birthday tomorrow.
I wouldn't...
Happy birthday, Jack.
You threw me for a loop there, Paula. All right, so Article 21, it was a citizen petition article, and the individual reached out to the Town Manager today and asked that that be withdrawn, which is why that is not being moved on tonight. Unless there is any other business to come before Town Meeting, we are adjourned.